Second.
Second. Any more questions? Oh, wait, we have to amend that.
Yes.
We need to strike under personnel B five. There's a lot to talk about. And then, we need to check on the Spanish trip with Asta.
On what?
On the Spanish trip. We're all set to go and record the agent for it.
Well, we were just waiting for a final okay that that country was filing American people procedures.
That'll just be a discussion item.
Just a discussion item, okay.
A amended for discussion.
Oh, no, it's discussion.
All right, I guess we can leave it discussed possibly.
Yep.
Okay. Is that okay with person that motioned it?
Yes.
Second. Sue.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yep.
Isaiah.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
And I'll go next.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes of February twenty-fourth and February twenty-seventh.
Second. More discussion. Sue.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Sandy.
Yes.
Tom.
Yep.
Isaiah.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
And I'll go next. You have a motion to approve these first ones in payroll.
So.
Second. More discussion. Questions? Sue.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Isaiah.
Uh, Sandy.
Yes.
Yes.
Tom.
Isaiah.
I understand.
Cause I had.
Yep. Okay. Kim.
Yes.
And I'll go next. Alrighty. My report. Ladies and gentlemen, the Wisconsin High School Board, guests of our school board meeting, I would like to recognize a valued member of our district. This member was recognized and nominated by two of our staff members, Amelia Haas and Kathy Haye, with a written recommendation from our district administrator, Dr. Elworthy. This nomination was sent to a panel of judges that include parents, representatives of the DPI, superintendents, teachers, and fellow principals. This valued member is our own Ms. Asta Sepetis. And she is the state of Wisconsin high school principal of the year recipient. She will be representing the state of Wisconsin at the national principal of the year ceremony in Washington DC this fall. She will present, be presented with a plaque, a thousand dollar check for her school, and a five hundred dollar check to go towards the cost of transportation through Washington DC. This will be presented to her at the state middle and high school principals convention in Madison, Wisconsin, February nineteenth, twenty fifteen. Ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand and help me recognize our old Asta Sepetis, Wisconsin State High School. Alrighty. Now, the next thing I have is about the employee manual. If, uh, please send any suggestions, uh, changes you'd like to talk about, the board should talk about, to Mark or I in our emails. I'd like to have it by April first, if we could, so we can start scheduling meetings in the April, May timeframe to discuss it, and hopefully in June be able to amend the manual if necessary, so it's ready for the next season, starting July one. So, if you have any questions, please call Mark or I and I'll go over there.
Just a brief report tonight. We have a lot of, um, projects that are coming about and work that's been planned the last year, year and a half. I want to welcome Brad Simonson of HSR, and he's going to be presenting our facility use study. Specifically, it's going to be the assessment. He'll be asking some questions, providing information, and then we'll be figuring out what the next steps are. As you can tell, at the bottom of the agenda, we have, uh, you know, there is a recommendation to, um, enter into a five-year contract for students. We'll also be talking a little bit more about, um, our first phase of the wireless project, parking lot project, which shadows some of the reconstruction of Highway fourteen. So it has to come down and then get retooled, and also our CISA five-service contract. Thank you.
Alrighty, public input. Mr. Derek Stotts.
I'm, uh, coming, we're coming here to, uh, discuss my son's accident happened back on the fifth of February. He was hit in the face with a hot stick, fire blast. And he lost his two front teeth. And, uh, there's a lot of amount to build adding up on it. There is a lot of inconsistencies with this incident report that we received. And the, the steps I had to go through to get information as a taxpayer and a parent was absolutely ridiculous. I got in touch with John Erpox's office, Department of Public Instruction, um, Keith Bachman, the CEO and president of the FIAID, CEO of the FIAID Education in the state of Wisconsin, he got me in touch with Irene Hair. And why, as a taxpayer, do I have to get special permission to get insurance information that we pay for and for this incident report, which is a state statute that we have the right to get? And from this incident report, there's more on this than just this. Cause you can tell by the copy that it's folded over paper. We, it says we were called the day of the accident. We were not contacted. We, um, they called the wrong parents. It took my son giving my in-laws' number out to, uh, and then they contacted us. For one, he has a medical ID bracelet on his wrist. Number's on there. Two, all our contact information is in the system. So that was not done. It took me three weeks to get response from district officials. And I have a question on why the board was not addressed with this issue until within the last week or so. On this, on this type of injury and required curriculum course, some, you guys should have been known of this, not even the week after, within days. And why are we letting our kids in school do, do athletic activities without the proper safety gear? I, that is beyond me. I, needless to say, the past month, I am good impressed with the way this is handled. And there's a lot of questions I, I need answers on, and my wife and I need answers on, and we're not getting. And it better come, I, I hope it comes quickly and swiftly, and I'm not waiting too much longer.
I will speak because I have been talking with you and, uh, Dr. Elworthy and collecting the facts. The reason it's not on this meeting tonight is because we don't have everything together. And I explained that to you. I also explained that when I have everything, which is just got into my emails and proper channels.
Why did it take this long for you to get this information?
Takes time, Derek. That's all I, as I told you that, that I, I have to gather all this information to be able to present to the board. Final pieces are coming, as I remember this afternoon, there's a couple more questions that are being asked right now, and I haven't got the answers yet. When I get it, and I expressly said that to you, as soon as I can, if I have to call a special meeting, I would call a special meeting of the board to discuss your situation. But I'm not coming to the board without all the facts and information that I can gather to make so that they can make a rational decision, a wise decision, or at least have a good conversation about it. And that has, that just takes time and bring together. I apologize it takes that long. I have asked for a summary of how things went and a timeline, and so that I can present that all to the board.
On this though.
That is just now coming, I have everything.
On this though, there's, it says stuff, but it's, there's stuff on here that's not true.
Okay. That, that'll all be hatched out as I get all the information pulled together, pulled to give to the board. But I have to get it all collected. That is my duty as president, to bring that all together and bring it so that they have all the information, so that they can make a wise decision.
And then, uh, as, as a taxpayer and, and a parent here, our, our money goes to pay these premiums on these insurance. Under, isn't that what it's there for?
Well, I, that we'd have to look into the insurance.
I mean, I think that's, that should be looked into because, because we, we, that's what, well, insurance is there for, to cover this type of stuff.
It depends on your policies and stuff, and like I said, that, that would have to be checked into, and I guess we'd have to.
If I could add, Jeff.
Yep.
We have that, the claim that was made was against liability. It does not include medical insurance. So this is liability insurance. It's different than medical insurance.
Isn't, isn't there some sort of liability here?
Well, as we've discussed and as noticed by the insurance company, the letter sent to you on the twenty-eighth, uh, explains their determination.
There's not a good enough explanation, my offending to deny this.
Well, that's the insurance company's decision.
Which I think the board should address this too, because where, where, where are these premiums going?
Sure. And understood, I hear what you're saying. And, and that's why, and not to go too much further, you know, people can purchase individual school insurance, as an example. And that's, as Jeff referred to, he's been collecting information, asking questions. Everything will be compiled together, and that's when Jeff will make the decision to have the.
So as soon as I can, I'll, I'll be in touch with you, and we'll get something set up so we can, you know, you can explain more, and I can have all the facts and figures for the board members here, so that they can make a good decision.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Question?
Derek and Tony had requested executive session.
Mm-hmm.
And why, why weren't they allowed to meet with us in executive session since it involved a student and a health issue?
My understanding in talking to the attorney is, uh, unless it's specific to their, you can help me on this, Mark, the medical records and the medical stuff only, that would be closed session. Everything else is open session because it's an incident, uh, and a liability issue, is the way I understood.
The claim itself needs to be done within an open session, and as questions arise, then there could be a move forward. But based on the counsel and the direction we got, we redirected that as an open session.
But that, that originally wasn't the case, right? You, you denied them executive, uh, an audience for the executive session because.
I denied, correct. And I will take full responsibility for that because we didn't have all the information necessary for the board to make the decision. And I held off on that and the fact that this agenda was very full. And I explained that. And I explained that to Mr. Stotts.
I recall a recent, uh, executive session we had with parents related to.
No, 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 we're, we're, we're getting off subject now.
No, no, no.
This is public input.
Right, right.
And we've already straight parked on it, so I think.
But it involves questions that they have had.
And that we can deal with when we have our meeting. Okay? Right now is not the right time. This is public input.
I don't understand that, though. We, we have an executive session for a class change, but not to talk about the, an incident in which a child was injured?
Again, the advice is the claim.
Again, right.
The claim isn't open. That's, that's where it's at.
But, but the claim has been denied by your insurance, the insurance company, hasn't it?
And it has to be discussed. It's been open for twenty, twentieth of February.
It was denied on the twentieth of Fe-.
Twenty-eight. Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. Does that date have any reflection upon the executive session? Was that part of the criteria that needed to be done in order to get into executive session?
There was all sorts of things that needed to be done. And like I said, not all the information was pulled together until recently. Uh, and again, without going any further into it, and as I get all the rest of the information pulled together for the board review, in which we in the next few days will call a special meeting, and I explained that several times.
It's, I mean, do you have.
So you will have a special session, yes.
No, do you have a, a timeline for that?
Uh, right now, the last questions I'm waiting for answers on, uh, in, in the summary from what Mark had put together, so, as a request of counsel and what we need to give to you to give you guys the proper information.
So within a week, possibly?
Yeah. I would say within. I won't, you know, until we get those answers, I can't, you know, I can't dictate how they answer me. It's just like the insurance company coming back with their claim or denial. Uh, takes time. So it's, it's the best I can tell you. So, I think we'll move on after that, so. District business, presentation by HSR on facility use study.
Again, welcome. Uh, Brad and his team, um, were awarded the study, and, uh, he's made a couple visits, and, um, I'll turn it over to Brad.
Okay, thanks for having us down here. Spend a few minutes, uh, all of you have a booklet in front of you. Again, for tonight, it's me, I'm the dean. The, the rest of the folks, um, are part of the report, obviously. We've been, we've got several of you. Little bit about our company. First of all, we've got thirty-five people, engineers, architects, landscape architects, interior designers in La Crosse. We've been in business since nineteen fifty-three. I've been with the company since nineteen eighty-two, and the president of the company. And, um, we do projects for K-12 schools from Superior, from Milwaukee, to Rhinelander, to Omaha, Nebraska, basically. Cover a lot of Iowa, Minnesota, Wisconsin. So we do a lot of these kinds of projects and work with a lot of K-12 schools, so little kind of reference, point of reference for you. Um, this booklet that you have now, if we look at it as a tool, a working document that we'll use for, um, for, and you will use for a long time, and, uh, you'll have a lot of good references in here. We, this isn't by any means completed. We, we look at it, like I said, as a working document that can be refined, updated, and will be a good piece of information for you for many years to come. But certainly it gives us a good perspective on what your buildings are currently like. Um, the, the pieces of the puzzle that we look at are kind of covered in the, in the first page. Um, we're gonna look at site, sites of all of the buildings, and all the issues related to, uh, the building and the site. Um, we're gonna look at the buildings themselves, the architectural pieces of the buildings, the, uh, the, the, uh, building envelope, if you will, and the structure in all of those pieces. Um, we're also gonna look at, section three involves the infrastructure of the buildings, um, the mechanical systems, electrical systems, plumbing, um, all of the, the kind of guts of the building, if you will. Um, section four is, um, our section on energy, which, um, that's gonna be kind of an ongoing thing for us. Um, and then section five is kind of your, a good look at your educational program, how your buildings fit with your educational practices that you're doing now. And again, that's another section that will be ever evolving and, and refined as we work with you, uh, throughout, uh, throughout the project. Okay, kind of in a nutshell here, I've got, I've got some of the drawings up here for each of the schools, which certainly have a lot on your booklet, too. The, the, this thing, from what I'm looking at is the site for each building. Um, this is obviously Black Earth Elementary School. And, uh, we've got the building here, of course, we've got streets, and we have railroad tracks, and, and the yellow line gives the boundaries of the property close anyway, we're close for that. Um, looks to be about seven point three acres here, and then that, within the property line, your building at Black Earth is about fifty-five thousand eight hundred square feet, which is, um, a little, little more than an acre. So you can kind of see the, the, the building obviously right here, and it gives you about seven acres roughly, um, which, uh, you know, again, I need to verify that seven, seven acre number, cause while I honestly, as I look at this, it looks maybe a little less than seven acres. Um, the, the, um, the guidelines for the state of Wisconsin, uh, DPI, if you will, and, and through our experience, that's the guidelines for site size for buildings, for schools. Uh, for elementary schools, it's generally about ten acres plus one acre for thirty-one kids. So, um, we've got three hundred, or two hundred, two hundred and two kids, about two hundred kids in your building at Black Earth. Um, so, you know, the rule of thumb, if you went by that guideline, you, you'd want about twelve acres for this, for that site. And again, you can kind of test that. I wasn't there when the kids, well, I was there when the kids were there, but I didn't see any, any kids outside using the site. You, uh, you kind of see how the site works, you know? Obviously, there's, there's parking issues, I think, perhaps, maybe I'm right up wrong on that, but that's kind of why I'm looking for some feedback from you, too, on some of these things. But, um, it's definitely some parking issues. Interesting property line that looks like it's holes through on the left field of the ball field. And then, uh, and then, actually, one of the main things that we really look at and try to, try to address is safety at any of these sites. We always like to try to separate buses from cars, if possible. We try to create a, a easy, safe drop-off point for parents that are dropping off kids at an elementary site. And then, of course, the playground area. We wanna make sure that that's a safe area, it's easy to get to for the kids, and it's easy to supervise. So those are definitely key criteria that we look at when it comes to the site. Um, and, and again, you know, there's a lot to, to talk about here, but, but generally speaking, it starts to give us some things to think about in terms of the site at Black Earth. This is the building, we'll come back to this building plan a little bit, um, and then, talk, talk a little bit about how the building is basically the site as well. But that gives you a little, little flavor for, for, um, Black Earth on the site. Mezzo, um, site, again, the boundaries are, most of the site is on the back side of the school here. I think the only parking lot is right here. Again, it seems maybe tight or in there for parking, maybe not.
It's not used by.
Yeah, that's actually a.
This is church parking?
No, no, that's an old street. It's not a parking lot, that's a playground.
Oh, yeah, I, I, okay. Yeah, I knew it was a playground, but I thought it seemed like it was a parking stalls in there, too. But basically, there's no parking over here then, just the street parking, the way I see it. And certainly for an event, after-school event, probably an issue. And staff, I'm assuming, parks on the streets then. Um, so again, kind of another issue. Parents dropping off kids, just park, drive off this edge of the street and curb and drop them off, probably around here, or wherever they can, or in this room. Buses, um, I'm assuming are over here, that other down here.
Okay.
Okay. So, so again, you can kind of see and tell, a lot of stuff going on here with a lot of traffic, um, crossover, kids walking, cars coming, buses coming, so definitely something we wanna look at, think about in terms of safety, and trying to figure out a way to solve some of these problems and, and concerns in the same. This site is about five acres, um, according to, to our maps here. And again, the recommendation is roughly eleven or, or twelve acres, um, on the site. And again, some of, you'll see also, after you get through the areas and photographs, there, we've done a little, uh, rating form, and you can read through these things, where we try to rate the different issues or criteria of the site in terms of size, the photography, the lay of land, the subtle conditions, um, the neighborhood, utilities, those kinds of things, we, we try to put a rating score at, just so we can start to, um, just kind of get a feel for what we're dealing with here. And, uh, again, these are subject to discussion and perhaps disagreement. Some folks may, may say that should be a, a one versus a three, for instance. And those are good discussion points to have, so, and that's the intent of this. At, at your high school and middle school, through the property line, again, we got the highway, and I know there's some major, major changes going on here out at the end of the entry to the site, which is a good thing. Um, and it's a good thing you're doing this right now, because hopefully we can, uh, work with the DOT and, and so it makes sense for a total package, kind of grants a perspective. But again, we've got about forty-two to forty-six acres somewhere in, in that vicinity here, the way, the best we can calculate. Um, your building right here is about a hundred and sixty thousand square feet. We've got three hundred and seventy-eight kids in this building. And, uh, and again, safety, a major issue. We wanna, we wanna make sure we, we make it as safe as possible, plus we're gonna make it as efficient as possible with this, with this traffic flow. Um, I know, uh, when I drive in here, I'm not sure if I should just keep going around in a circle, or turn in here, you know? There's a lot of things that people that don't know coming to the site may be a little confused with. Um, the other thing that I noticed the first time I came up was, where's the front door? Obviously, it's back here, and all of you that know that, know that. But, um, that, that kind of something that you might wanna think about, too, is making that front door as evident as possible. And, um, again, that's, that's a safety and security kind of thing, plus, plus ease of just a functionality thing, and an image thing, probably, I would say, too. So, um, again, you know, the, we've got pretty good amount of land here, and it's just trying to take that land you have available and make the best use out of it possible. And, uh, those are things we can explore on the road, too. Um, any questions on site? Kind of go through these kind of quickly, but I guess spend as long as you want.
Sue?
I don't know if this is the right time to ask this question or not. On the sites in your, in the score that you do.
Mm-hmm.
The Black Earth Elementary School gets a, a two for fire protection and safety.
A two on what?
Um, fire protection and, and safety.
Okay.
Under the location.
Yes.
And then, the Mezzo Elementary School gets a three for fire and safety. And I'm just kind of curious as to, what is the difference?
That, that's a good, good question.
And I don't know if we explain that later in here, or?
No, let's talk about it right now. It's a terrific question. And again, I'm looking at it from kind of a cursory perspective, you know, just kind of a faraway perspective. Right now, I see one street along that, that borders the school. Okay? Versus this one has two streets. That, in kind of a nutshell, is one of the reasons that I, whether it's right or wrong, put it as a two versus a three. Just because it has more access to and exposure from the streets, okay? Now, certainly you or someone could argue, argue with that and, and perhaps win, okay? So there's, again, there's no block of science here, it's, it's not a exact science, it's just kind of a feel for what I'm seeing. And if you can, if you've got some other thoughts on why they should be diverse or they should be equal, you know, certainly there's valid points to be made, I'm sure. Okay? Great question, though. And again, we can go through every one of these things and have a long discussion about every one, I'm sure. Good question.
Is the, is the noise rating for Black Earth one because of the railroad tracks?
That's what I put it at, and that's why, yeah. Now, again, I haven't been there, my train was going by, okay? So you could hear it. It may not be an issue, but I, I'm just, again, from my perspective, from a thousand miles away, that's kind of what I'm, I'm seeing, okay? Yeah.
But then, under the high school, for the noise, you have three. It's the same.
With the highway. With the railroad tracks. Okay, that's a great point.
It's the same railroad tracks that go by both sides.
Yeah. A valid point. So maybe that should be a two or a one here, maybe because you've got a highway noise here, too, perhaps.
Is this data, uh, will this data be used in making decisions to say that maybe this would be a better building because of?
I think, I think it will be, and it should be, you know? And again, that's why, you know, these, these good discussions are good to have, um, because.
These are your, your side. Your, your thoughts, and you're asking us for our thoughts to help balance it out.
Exactly. To help us out, exactly. You know, again, there's a lot of different things, you know? The, the, the distance maybe is an issue. Here, the train tracks look a little closer. And maybe the tracks aren't even a problem, you know? Maybe they're not even an issue. But, um, and, and generally speaking. But and and generally speaking, when you're in the building, you know, you probably even hear the train going by. So so, you know, it's just some gut feels and some some criteria that we look at when it comes to site of sites of school buildings. Okay? Great, great questions. Again, we could spend all night talking about these things, I'm sure. So I'll I'll keep plugging away here and we can come back to anything that we need to, and we'll have these ongoing discussions, I think.
So these numbers were based basically on what you guys see instead of asking anybody in the district, like going to the building principal and saying, hey?
I haven't done that, and that's kind of what we're trying to do now, is get some of that feedback. And we'll be doing this for a while, you know. Hopefully, these become public, folks can challenge some of the information that's in here, some of the some of the subjective kind of information. We're going to get back into some of the non-effective information here when we get into the engineering piece. But but these are, these are all good talking points and things that you want to think about when if, when and if you start making decisions on whatever, whatever the decision is, okay? Section two involves the buildings themselves, and when apparently speaking, all of your buildings are in pretty decent shape. I, you know, they've all been added to. The latest additions have been in nineteen ninety-five. Of course, we had your significant project at all schools, I think it was. And then, and again, if you see any information that's incorrect in here, let us know. You're, again, the head building, some of your buildings are older, obviously, some of the pieces of the buildings are older. And there's definitely some building envelope issues with some of them, for instance, many of those and things like that. But, you know, they did well maintain and and, you know, I think in decent decent shape overall. When we get into section number three, it starts talking a little bit about some of the HVAC mechanical electrical plumbing issues. And obviously, you know, you've had a fairly significant project fairly recently with boiler replacement. So your boilers are all in pretty, pretty nice condition and fairly new and fairly efficient. There are some things that we would look at, for instance, at at Black Earth, we're looking at doing some V A D. We we would highly suggest you consider some V A D upgrades to your mechanical system and HVAC system. Also, there's some considerations of improving some of the motors, for instance, going to a variable frequency drive versus constant drive, constant frequency. Those kinds of little changes will certainly increase and improve your efficiency in some of those situations and on some of the mechanical systems. The other piece of the puzzle mechanically is the the cooling. Your cooling systems in the elementary schools are getting rather past their lifespan, okay? They definitely are energy, I'll call them energy hogs, okay? Energy users and probably are on their verge of failing for you. So certainly, that would be another consideration for you to be able to upgrade some of those components for the cooling systems in the elementary schools. Not so much in the high school, but certainly the elementary schools. Plumbing or electrical, I think, you know, some simple things like fire alarms. Again, to meet, there's there's several little code related items throughout all the buildings, primarily the elementary schools, I would say, light fire alarms. You know, they don't need current code, but as long as you're holding your own in the buildings and not doing major upgrades, you won't have to bring those up to current code standards. But something that you might want to put on the wish you list down the road, upgrading your fire alarm, things like surge protection for your systems in the buildings. And and then the clocks, for instance, they're all, they're not a master. It's it's. Yeah, upgrading the existing clock systems, I think, would be something that we'd want to do at every school, perhaps, if possible. And then, you know, again, if you, as you read through this, things like LED exponents, you know, little things like that that can save some energy. Certainly, the technology's changed a lot of that over the years since you've done the additions even. So, you know, again, if the time or if that old word should be allowed in your program or plan to do some of those sort of things like that. Plumbing syst-, yeah.
I am, I'm confused here.
Okay.
In the mechanical systems, Black Earth Elementary School, the recommendation says no changes should be required to the heating system, okay?
For the boilers.
From a train energy analysis report, the school is, Maisel Mania Elementary is performing at forty-nine point seven percent below industry average.
Maisel Mania or? That that should be Black Earth, that's a typo.
Okay, so if no changes should be required, but this system is performing at almost fifty percent below the industry average.
That that's for the boilers, yeah.
I mean, this is confusing, I don't know what this means.
Okay. Well, again, in a nutshell, your boilers are good, but because of the V A D, the way the air is distributed, that could be improved, okay? That's kind of what we're saying. Boilers are fine, the V A D system for distribution could be upgraded, and that's kind of where we'll go with that.
That's where our losses are?
Yeah.
Because of the distribution not working.
Correct.
Because we could also then control specifically where we're heating and where not heating.
Exactly, yeah.
And if that were taken care of, then this performing factor fifty percent below the industry average would, you have a break.
That would that would take care of a good bunch of it, yes. The other pieces of the puzzle are the actual how it's distributed in the building. You know, we want to all look at the ductwork and the way the ductwork lays out, those kinds of things come into play as well.
And current, well, we we heard this in two thousand nine when we did the upgrades out here with Train. And the goal was to, we would be, anytime a pneumatic failed, we'd replace, but it's just.
Yeah.
They haven't failed.
They have, they're starting.
We could run that just right.
Yeah. But on the other hand, it's, you know, we made that decision that we could do this much at this time if we could do other things in the future.
Right, go ahead. That's probably the biggest piece of the HVAC system that that would be a good thing for you to do is to control systems within all the buildings. And going from pneumatic to operating to digital controls, that would save twenty, thirty percent. So that, doing the V A D plus the control system, I had to mention the control system, yes. So so the control systems are definitely antiquated and would be a good investment for you, to be honest with you. That'd probably be one of the first things you'd want to do.
That was proposed to us already by Train?
Yep.
And again, we're we're working with Focus on Energy right now to determine some of the the potential remakes and some of that whole, that whole piece of the puzzle in section four. So that's why, that's that's another big part of our report, eventually, when we get get it all put together, is that, oh, how that relates to Focus on Energy, some of these upgrades that you could do, and what kinds of assistance you might be able to give from that, okay?
And as we mentioned mechanism, we've at times, once or twice in buildings and grounds, the the pipes for the cooling in Maisel were buried, we brought those up. But it's an older system and they no longer make the piping, so replacement in Maisel for the cooling system is about eighty thousand right now.
The section five gets into a little bit more of the planning, but the how the building's functioned and not so much about the parts of the building. These these pieces kind of start to tell us, yeah, you have a lot of room, you have too much room, you have not enough room. How are the how do the buildings work within them? Right now, you can kind of see recommended building capacities, and these are based on not only DPI, but also maybe more so some of the projects we've done throughout the state, okay? And what we see is elementary schools usually are a hundred and fifty square feet per student, maybe up to two hundred square feet per student. And again, depending on the district, depending on the programs that the school district's providing, that's where those ranges get to be a little large. Middle schools, we've seen anywhere from two hundred to two hundred and fifty square feet per student, somewhere in that vicinity. And then high schools are anywhere from two fifty to three fifty. Three fifty would definitely be on the high side. I don't know quite honestly if we've seen one, I do see them around three forty. But that's when you have a swimming pool and the auditorium and all kinds of different, you know, large gymnasiums, those kinds of things that that bring that square feet per student up for high schools. Just to give you a little reference point, your Black Earth's elementary school with fifty-six thousand square feet, we've got two hundred kids enrolled in there. The building efficiency is, I projected about sixty-five percent, which means about thirty-five percent of that building is not usable spaces. It's walls, corridors, little nooks and crannies that don't get used by kids generally. Usually, a building, a good building is around twenty-five percent or seventy-five percent efficient. Again, the the walls alone in a building can be anywhere from ten percent to fifteen percent of the total gross area of the building. So gives you a little feel of that, but.
I have a question here.
Sure.
When you list like two hundred and seventy-seven square feet per student for Black Earth, now is that just taking our entire square footage? Divided by the number of students that we have, but it does not take into consideration those areas that we are not using?
Correct.
So this is really an inflated?
It's, what we're doing is taking the whole building area.
Yeah.
Total gross area and just dividing it by the numbers of kids in the building.
Okay, but we're not really doing two hundred and seventy-seven square feet per student.
Right.
Because three quarters of the second floor isn't being used. So I think this is a real, this is a real misnomer. I mean, it's just, and if you prepare, if we compare that to the recommended building capacities.
Right.
I mean, you can't because I'm assuming that these recommended capacities is that you're using all of the school.
That's a great point. And and perhaps what that tells us then is we should have another tagline here for Black Earth that shows, okay, this is the area that we're actually using versus the number of kids, and we'll have another another number.
We would need that for all the.
Probably do, yeah. But the challenge there will be, because these are total gross areas.
Yeah.
And the challenge will be to try to determine, like, like, for instance, let me let me use Black Earth as an example. There are, there are a few rooms in here that that aren't being utilized a lot, if any, okay? And that might be another good drawing to have, by the way. But what we need to do, like, say if this room isn't used, we need to calculate everything else except that area and and get to that square feet per student. But the point we're trying to make here is that if you had, if you use the entire building with two hundred, two kids, you you still have plenty of room, okay? You've got a lot of it, you've got some extra room in there, okay? And then let me go on through to to Maisel. Again, this is even a little bit more pronounced, where we've got six, almost sixty thousand square feet there. And and we've got a hundred and forty-four kids. And if we use that number, we come up with four hundred and fourteen square feet per student. And that tells me that you got, you could put double the kids in that building, right? Is that kind of what that's telling us? So so again, your point is well taken because that's a great observation that you just made there, that, yeah, hold on a minute, Jeff.
Your recommended building capacities, does that include the non-used areas too? So is that apples to apples that way, or is that, it was square footed recommendations?
Yeah, and most schools don't have non-used areas, okay? So, yeah, we we're using the whole building.
Yeah, but the recommended building capacity, that's using the whole building too. So that that, in her question, she's saying, well, you know, we got unused space.
Right.
Well, that shouldn't be calculated, but you're not comparing apples to apples in that sense.
Well, but but you're eating that building.
Right.
You're maintaining that building, you're doing all those things. But your point is well taken, I mean, we can look at it both ways and 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 get a feel for it from both perspectives.
Well, I think I think that if we're going to use these comparisons to make a decision on, you know, what we need to do to utilize it more efficiently, that you have to have what we are using now and what we actually have so that you can compare and say, okay, Maisel has about forty-five percent of this building not being used.
Right.
Would that be enough room to combine the two grade schools or not? Or with what we have out at the middle school, high school, you know? The rooms that we're not using there, can we move other classes out there and possibly fit all our kids into Black Earth?
Yeah, you're you're hitting on some good points. For instance, at at Maisel, using Black Earth, and this is a good reason to do another drawing to show, but I'm going to try to outline it here. The stage over here is is basically an area that's not used tremendously, from what I understood. This space.
Second floor.
Well, the whole second floor, yeah. I mean, actually, the only, these three rooms are not used per se. These two rooms are not used per se. These rooms in here and then stairs are used. Everything, all this stuff is really not used. So obviously, by far, the second, the entire second floor is almost not used. When I was up there, there was just a few, a couple of people up there, really.
Two music classrooms on the computer lab.
Right.
There's three rooms upstairs used.
Fifty percent.
Half, half the days, two and a half days.
And then there's some areas down here, the locker rooms downstairs, not really used. And then this 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 space, this section here, I think, is not usable.
It's underutilized.
Underutilized, yeah. So again, it's a great exercise, I think, to look at it from both perspectives. One, showing, okay, we're using this amount of space in the building and we've got X amount of kids in there. So, yeah, we're doing good that way, so we're making good use of the space. But then we also need to look at the fact that we've got some other space that we're not using at all, even though we're, we still own it, okay? We're paying taxes, that might be, we're maintaining it, and all those things that kind of start to come into play. The bottom line, I think, is that we were starting to see that, yeah, you could definitely put more kids in here if you wanted to. That's kind of what we're saying. And then, this was, yeah, okay, here's another interesting observation that I looked at. At Maisel, you know, again, we came in here, looked at the, it's a nice gym. And and then we came over here and walked in the library. And look at the library compared to the gym, it's like almost big. So, and it's a great big space, so, you know, it's nice that you have that. But again, trying to make is make it as efficient as we possibly can in terms of usage and and, you know, so you don't have to heat extra space or maintain extra space, that'd be a goal, perhaps, that we'd want to explore it here. The, let's see, one, two, Black Earth. Um, the, uh, let's see, let me go to Black Earth and kind of highlight the rooms that were underutilized. So not many over here at Black Earth, and that's kind of why that two seventy-seven square feet is what it is. That show, that tells me that you're not too far off the guideline with your entire building. There's just a couple of rooms up here that don't get used a whole lot, locker rooms, and, uh, and then there's one room nearby in here that doesn't get used a whole lot. So that, those are the only two spaces at, at Black Earth that don't get used tremendously. Um, so, so, you know, again, that was kind of an interesting thing to look at, and, and what makes that two hundred and seventy-seven square feet per student kind of be a telltale sign that you're pretty, you're close to capacity here with your building. I mean, you're using all the spaces effectively. I, I would still argue that you probably have a little more room in the building than you need, perhaps, but maybe that's a good thing, gives the kids a little more elbow room. But maybe a not so good thing because you've got to maintain all that space too. So you can look at it from all those different perspectives. Um, at, uh, at the high school, middle school, this is kind of another interesting one. And again, this, this spurs me on to do another set of drawings that shows my scruples here better, more clearly depicted. Um, we've got a bunch of rooms down here at the corner that aren't used at all. It's really just storage. Um, and then there's one room, I think it's right here, that's not used much. This room's not used a whole lot. These two rooms are not used a whole lot. Um, vocal music, I mean, yeah, it's used, but maybe not as much as it could be. Um, we have a room here, it looks like that's maybe on the edge. Is your cafeteria used just for your cafeteria, I think? There's really all the functions that are going on in it. Um, and then we've got several rooms down here, these wings here, um, in the middle school wing. I think this whole head looks like it's kind of underutilized, and then maybe a little chunky here that's some of it. So, you know, again, if it kind of starts to get a feel for your building, you've got a big building here, about a hundred and sixty dollars square feet, and the square feet calculation here was at four hundred and twenty-one square feet per student. And again, I look at the whole building. This is what you've got to work with. How many kids are in there? How effective is it? How, how, how well is it utilized in terms of efficiency? So again, four hundred and twenty-one square feet, pretty, pretty big, pretty big, I would say. Um, you could probably put a, quite a few more kids in there if you wanted to do that. Um, same thing with Maisel. Again, four hundred and fifty square feet per student, obviously with that whole second floor being underutilized, you could put some more kids in there if you needed to. Now, here's a good criteria, a thing to think about when you start thinking about adding kids to a school. Are your core areas big enough to handle them? You know, things like a lunchroom, things like gyms, restrooms, lunchroom, library. Those are interesting pieces that you want to make sure are big enough once you start putting more kids in. Now, I'm sure you've had more kids at, at Maisel over the years, probably here too. Um, so you would think that they would be sized accordingly, but that's something we will look at further in greater detail with you to make sure those core areas are going to be adequate if we start moving kids or adding kids to a particular building.
So can you, with the, with your dimensions and all that, um, give us a calculation on how many additional students we can put at the middle school, high school to keep within the recommended building capacities?
I can do that, I haven't done that yet. Um, another part of that calculation, it's one thing to calculate it, but then there's another thing to literally make it work, functionally.
I understand that.
So I think that would be what may be the next step that you're suggesting we get into, and that's probably the most logical step to go to next, is start, start to analyze that a little bit greater detail like you suggest with how many kids could we put in here? Or how many kids could we put in Maisel, or, or Black Earth perhaps? To make, to make it building efficient, to make it work well as an educational tool, and, um, and to make it safe and all those kinds of things, we want to make sure that we're, you know, we decide all that stuff too.
So to do that additional study, is that going to cost, does it make more money? That's all included in it?
That's basically the next step probably of what we need to get into. I thought it was very important to get a handle on what we've got to work with now, and we're starting to get that. We still got more to learn about the middle school too, but, but we're getting there. And, and this is for you too, this gives you a good handle on what we've got. And now the next step is exactly what you're suggesting to do, and it's not that, it's part of our repeat.
So you're, you're, you're basically updating us on what we have?
Mm-hmm.
And asking, by understanding, what our thoughts are on some of this now, as a board?
Yep, exactly.
Or as a community, as an administration?
Yep, exactly, and, and hopefully at some point in time too, we would reach out to the community and get more input like you've actually want. Sue's already started, started to generate that discussion, which is terrific, and, and that's kind of the process, you know?
Um, maybe, maybe I missed this, but, uh, operational costs per square foot? You have Maisel and Black Earth, you don't have middle?
I don't, because I haven't figured it out yet, we're still working on it.
What, what do you use to, uh, to figure that out? What figures do you use?
Well, we use your actual utility costs, okay? And to determine that over, over the cycle of time. And, um, you know, again, this, this table would be expanded on, and then we'll also look at, um, what is typical or what, what normal is, okay? And normal, again, it's a wide range, if, well, I should say wide, but it's a pretty good range because a lot of things come into play, um, in terms of buildings themselves, the building envelopes, um, the, the, the gas prices, for instance, electric prices, um, the rates that they charge. Um, but we can, you know, I think the average normal is anywhere from like eighty cents to a buck ten, if I remember right, I'll tap my head there.
So the, so the operational costs are strictly utilities?
Usually, yeah, usually it's just gas and electric, okay? Now, we will also investigate other operational costs in terms of telephone, um, even, even staffing, we can look at that. So, you know, again, that's, that's yet to come. Those are some of the next steps you're talking about doing, and, um, the, it's, really gets kind of interesting to see, okay, here we are, there are buildings, how are our buildings working? How efficient are we? And, and are we getting the best bang for our buck in terms of educating kids and helping teachers teach kids? So that's what it's all about. Buildings are just tools like a pen or a computer, it's just a tool and a means to learn. And we want to make them as good of a tool as we possibly can. You got some great questions though, I appreciate hearing those, and I appreciate your thought process.
So there'll be more?
Oh yeah, there'll be more. I know.
There should be a lot more.
There should be, and, and there'll be a lot of questions for, out from us too, so it's a learning process, and, and, again, I think if we take the time and go through these step-by-step thoughts, then it all becomes a logical thought process, and we've done our due diligence as a group here, as a community, to make the best, have the best information we can to make the best decisions we can. And that's what we're here now for. Okay?
So what is your expectation of us right now?
Well, if you, I mean, if you, certainly what I would like you to do is review this and redline it.
Okay.
Okay, if there's things you question, redline it for us. And, um, whether you get that in for Mark or, or, and then he can get it to us, or certainly I think, uh, you can, you can get it, you can do it to me too, if you prefer, whatever, whatever you guys want to do. Um, and then, um, mark your feet with caps on, and we'll come, we'll come, we'll go back and start to do some of the things that we're talking about, plus other things, the whole energy thing, the whole focus thing, the whole educational program thing, and square feet per student thing, lots of things to do, and, uh, and then we'll come back and do another little update for you, and have another big discussion. And the next time, I think it'll be, we'll be able to sink our teeth into it a little bit more even because you're thinking about it more now, and we're thinking about it more now, and maybe start to see some, some direction perhaps that we can start to go. Okay?
Any more questions?
Immediate questions, I know you've got a lot to read.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate, appreciate your time.
Okay, move on to personnel. Motion to accept the resignation of Sandra Ellenbolt, fifth grade teacher with thanks for service since nineteen seventy-one.
Unfortunately, I will.
Miss one.
We have a second.
Second.
A second. Thank you, Sandra Ellenbolt.
I don't think any of my kids had it, I had her.
So.
I, I, she did.
Or. But I hear good, I have heard good things about her, she was a very good teacher.
I worked many years with Sandy, and she was always a tremendous role model for the kids and for the junior teachers too that were there, so, and Tom could credit her for where he is today.
I won't hold that against her.
Uh, we, both, both Sophie and me had her, so, yeah.
Sue?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yeah.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Kim?
Yeah, I will vote yes.
Motion to accept the resignation of Todd Stelzle, so wrestling coach with thanks for service since 2011.
Second.
Yeah, I wish that would kind of move on, but. Sandy, if you have a question?
Just wanted to thank Todd for the amount of effort he planned to start, to restart the program. He was tired of some things he had with us, he was so, uh, yeah, so positive, and just didn't stop, so I sure appreciate what he did.
Yep. Sue?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Kim?
I'll vote yes.
Motion to accept the resignation of Andrea Schneider Meyer as coach with thanks for service since 2013.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? Sue?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Tom?
Isaiah?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Motion to hire John Raff as summer school principal and starting sal, with a salary of twenty-five hundred. I have a second.
Second.
Any more discussion? Congratulations, John.
Thank you.
Well, not yet, but you're in the? Sue?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah. Kim?
Yes.
I'll vote yes, now congratulations. Discuss possible action to hire administrative? We skipped that one, I apologize. Discuss possible action on the district administrator contract. Motion to? I will make a motion to extend, uh, the contract for the district administrator for one year.
Second.
For the, be for the 2016, 17 square. And second, Kim? Any more discussion? Sue?
Yes.
Jim?
No.
Sandy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Isaiah?
No.
Kim?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. All right. Motion to approve Doug Presley as volunteer coach for track and field.
Second.
Sue, second. Any one?
Second.
Sue?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Isaiah?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Uh, okay, discussion on the overnight field trip of the Spanish classes.
I think that they, they just put in a request to be approved that they are going to be going to Spain instead of Argentina, and, um, the reason, I didn't look at this package, I submitted it before, but the reason was that that is, um, Mr. Ruby's kind of expertise, that's where he lived, they, they will still be getting a foreign exchange experience, but, um, and he's talked to the kids, he's talked to the parents, so before he went to all the, you know, details of starting to put together a trip, he wanted to mention that that would be approved, that it would be Spain instead of Argentina.
I don't think it'll be a problem as far as everybody here, so I guess when all paperwork and documents are ready, and it's bringing it forward, we'll?
Okay, so it'll let him know and?
Does that fit into that global connection certificate that we're talking about?
The actual, the travel, the travel itself I do not really fit in, but the students do need to take four years of the same language while in high school for that.
Okay. I didn't know those existed.
Good question. Any questions? And you said he's looking into the safety aspects of it?
Mm-hmm, as in?
As in that it's safe to go?
Yes, 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 he's, you know, he, he would be very meticulous about that, making sure everything, you know, he knows a lot of, he lived there for an extended period of time, and?
Any more discussion? All right, curriculum, discussion on summer school, remediation or enrichment? I love the Carol on that one.
We talked about this at the committee meeting, and we wanted to discuss it kind of at a board level, just discussion only to get a feel for you or, or what you heard from people out in the community, and then we'll go back into committee and come back with the recommendation to the board and then?
Well, I would love to see us go back to the enrichment program that we used to have. I mean, it was phenomenal, and the kids, at least mine, three, just went to every class that they possibly could. And I think that?
Generate more interest?
Yeah, and it, you know, it keeps the students involved that much longer. They don't have quite so long out of the classroom then, so if we can afford it, I'd like to see this do it.
Well, take a little bit of a process in that we need to go to the teachers and find out who, who would head up what projects or what classes, and then I, I'm assuming that we could put it out to the kids and see what kind of interest there was, and see if there's enough interest, and then we would run the programs. This would be not this summer, but?
I think that makes sense, there are interest kids to go to school during summer. I don't, I don't know. It's just because you and Marty kicked them out.
Well, maybe.
Dale, you saw the, the change in, in the, the programming from enrichment to more or less?
Remediation.
Remediation, or keep them, keep them, do you recall the reason why it changed?
It was budget, the, the, yeah, they behind, you know, with the savings and dollars.
In, in that, in that we, let's say we offered a drama class that we may not get enough people to, to enroll in that, is that, is that, I mean, as far as budget goes?
I don't recall the specifics, Jim, you know, they didn't talk about specific classes, it was just going from enrichment to academic only, so, and we changed, I mean, we've been doing this academic program, this will be the seventh summer, I think. You know, my, my first year, um, the first summer I came to Wisconsin Heights, Todd Stelzle was the summer school principal, and he had about three hundred and ninety kids in summer school, you know, at the elementary level, that summer, with some middle school kids, with them, and, and then the next year, we went back and it only be, you know, less than a hundred.
Have you, have you, uh, received a lot of feedback from parents on this?
Not in recent years, not in recent years, it just hasn't had a lot of discussion about it, you know, just very informal comments, so I wish, some of what Sue just said, you know, that's, those are the comments I hear, where I wish we had it like we used to. I have heard some of those too.
We've got a whole generation now, parents that haven't experienced the, the enrichment type of programs though.
And I think, I think what it was, was budget cuts, and we had to have places to cut the budget, and that was not a necessity as compared to your core school classes and stuff, so, you know, we just started out with the? So, you know, we started out with the gifted and talented and we used to have that. Then we kind of, little by little, got rid of that. And then we got rid of the enrichment and I would love to see that, if it's feasible.
I'd like to see some figures on it, yeah.
Well, the concept is you need, for a seventy-five period, seventy-five minute class, which, you know, you need to have at least fifteen students. Or you average fifteen students. So the drama example or, you know, we have other opportunities currently now that help increase with band, weightlifting, those are big classes. So it'd be a matter of how to have some of those enrichment classes enhanced and that will help. Currently, that's what it's doing. The current ones are helping us, how should I make it? Make it more feasible to run the remedial. Not that we wouldn't ever not do them, but it just balances. So that's the biggest thing. You know, it could be adding, you know, a phase in could be adding one hour in 2015 and saying, okay, instead of three hours, now we currently have a language, reading language arts block, a math block, and a quiet physical activity block. If we could add, you know, X class or certain, that could build it forward. The first, it'll be much like, if we decide to go bigger, be much like 4K. It's going to take two years for it to be more solvent. But that's the number, you know, fifteen students in a seventy-five minute class. And then you can go up to four and a half hours a day. I'm not saying that we need to, but that's the most you can count per student. So Tom, are those the numbers you're looking for or would you like to see?
Costs.
Costs?
Dollar bills. Money wise.
Yeah. So do you want to run it like, let's say, we could probably run something to the fact, this would be really good for a spare business manager, to use last year's numbers and then double it, double it but put in the seventy-five minutes and see how that could run up?
I just want to know what it's going to cost again, that's all.
Sure, yep.
That's really what I was talking to.
That's one of the biggest things with summer schools, the programs we have, we have to continue to maintain so that things are predictable.
More discussion on that? Discussion on early release professional development?
It's, the committee discussed, this is, they're talking about, and the teachers in our culture and climate committee meetings have asked, the teachers have asked for one to two early release days for them to plan the day, I guess. More than anything, they would like to collaborate amongst themselves. Coming out of committee, we, it was our suggestion that, and there are nine early releases, it was suggested that we give the teachers or tell the teachers, yes, take one of those early release days and see how it comes out, see if it's a productive day for them. And it is, it is a great learning tool for them to let that go. Otherwise, the district will be planning those days with everything that's, all they need to learn besides...
The original early release model was exactly what you just stated. Is that teachers would submit an agenda to the principals and what they were going to talk about, what they're going to work on that day as a collaborative project with their teammates. And then they would submit minutes as to what they got accomplished. And it worked very well. Teachers enjoyed having that time to share with each other. But it also allowed teachers to plan things that are just specific to those, those teachers. Example now, and Carol, you could help me out if you want. It's hard to plan for pre-K to 12 teachers, one activity. And I know you plan many activities for them all. But the FIAID teacher may not be interested in what the special ed teacher is doing. And this, this program would allow them to plan their own.
Get more specific.
I would definitely support even two days a year. Are you, oh, we're talking about two, two days?
In other words, they'd be more specific to their subjects or what they teach amongst them, groups individually, is what you're saying?
Okay.
I understand.
I'd say, you know, just any, just, we're looking for thoughts from board members, that's all. So we'll go back to committee.
More work for you. Discussion on global education certificate?
I'm going to let Carol take this one. She can probably just tell us about it as quick as anything else.
There's a kind of a recommendation from DPI that with the Common Core standard that school districts start moving toward providing an opportunity for a global education certificate for students that graduate from high school. Because a lot of Common Core, one of the goals is to develop a, more of a globally adaptable students when they graduate from high school. And so they've set up some criteria that would allow a student to get a global education certificate endorsement on their diploma or on their transcript. So when they're sent out, they would have that. Basically, it involves, most of the classes they're taking now, but it also has a couple of other more specific criteria. And I did hand that out at the board curriculum committee meeting on interdepartmental meeting tonight. But there's like eight credits in the world type topics. So for instance, if you were studying personal finance, then you would look at it from the standpoint of your own self, but also from the standpoint of where you would fit into the global economy. If you were looking at literature, you wouldn't do just American literature, you would do world literature. And a lot of those things we already have. And so those things would just fall into place. And then there are some additional things like a student would, in order to get the certificate, would have to take four years of one foreign language. They couldn't take like two years of one language and two years of another language. They'd have to take four years in the same language while they were in high school. And so there would be a couple of criteria there. So I did talk to the gentleman at DPI a little bit about it with small schools. He said that one of the things that they found with other small schools in the state that are moving in this direction is you might have to make available one or two online courses that students would have to take when they were in high school. And, you know, the question for me was, so what's the advantage of having the global education certificate to students? And I'm not sure where this is, but they said that eventually it's going to become a screener for some things. For instance, if two students from Wisconsin Heights, or let's say one from Wisconsin Heights and one from another district apply to UW Madison and they get the same rigor in their course selections in the school and so on, and they had the same balance with extracurriculars and extracurricular activities, what might be the screener that determines which of the two get of the slots at UW? And one of them might be the global education certificate because they're also moving into that, into that world of having their classes expand and include more things about the global economy and foreign languages and adaptability and acceptance of diversity and that kind of stuff. So this is kind of a move in that direction. The application itself is pretty simple. You simply tell what courses you have and which ones you would need to add. They come out, they do sort of an audit of it, and then they either approve it or disapprove it. And then you can make a move to get your transcripts endorsed with the global education certificate endorsement, so.
One thing you talked about too is that any student who's wishing to get this certificate has to decide in eighth grade, okay, I'm going to go through it.
Right, because the requirements, like for instance, the four-year language requirement, they need to do a language, the same language each of their freshmen through senior years. So they would have to know in advance that they wanted to do this and through the poster.
Could our Heights graduates attain this within the existing curriculum? Or would we have to add classes?
I honestly can't answer that because DPI would come out and look at what we offer. So for instance, if we had, let's just say, a humanities class, how much of that contains things that are pertinent to the world picture versus, you know, the United States only or Wisconsin only or whatever? And so they would come out, they would look at that, they would interview the teachers and stuff, and they would look at that. And if we had a component that covered humanities from a worldview, then they would decide they would accept the class. And I really don't know what they would, would accept. But I think for us, a lot of our classes would be accepted and I don't think it would add a whole lot of requirements to our kids to fully, you know, maybe they would have to take... Like a student couldn't decide to take Spanish one through three and then not take it four a year and get this. You know, they'd have to know upfront that they have to take Spanish all four years.
Is, is this something that the rest of the states are going toward?
The other states other than Wisconsin?
Yes.
Or, or the rest of Wisconsin?
Well, the other states other than Wisconsin.
Um, I honestly don't know.
And the reason I, well, the reason I ask that is because you said that it's kind of based around the Common Core standards. But if the legislation that's been introduced passes, where are we going to be having those Common Core standards? And then where would that put?
Well, the global, the global certificate, they're, they're moving forward with it whether the Common Core is used or not because I'm just, I, I'm not sure that they see it tied into Common Core directly. I'm just saying that the Common Core has more global standards. And so there's a push for this now just simply because it's a way to have your doctor align it in Common Core. You can, you can fit in some of the requirements easier. But I think they're moving forward with this regardless. There's not a direct one.
Would this be available for current high school students who have taken or will take the particular classes necessary?
It would have, it's a four-year program, so it would have to be incoming freshmen. So once it's adopted, it would be with the incoming freshman class that's following you.
Any more questions? Discussion on assessment calendar?
I would certainly pursue that, Kim, with the, or for the district.
Speaking for the both. No, I would agree with you. Discussion on assessment calendar?
This was more just information on what Jason is putting together for the school and the change in different tests that will be taken throughout the entire K-12, but mostly through the high school. And there'll be different time periods and type slots for different tests. And so he's kind of, you know, so that they go, oops, we forgot that one. I think he's putting together, so it's a little more than organized.
DPI hadn't finalized the testing windows and so on and all of the tests. And they're still working on new contracts. But they did send out at the end of last week, the current windows for all of the new testing. And so I gave that to Jason. He had prepared a preliminary calendar for us. And now that we have all the final dates, he can actually put the actual test windows in there. When we get done, we'll just have a one sheet document that tells us when the test will be. Some of the testing changes are the smarter balance assessment that was going to be given in replacement of the WKCE is no longer going to be given in the high school. Instead, they're running something called ASPIRE or the ACT early high school in ninth and 10th grade. And then they're running an 11th grade ACT that is Wisconsin accepted only. It's not the ACT that kids can take to the college. That still needs to be taken at a national test site on a national learning day. But they will run a Wisconsin data point ACT for the kids in 11th grade and all 11th graders will take it. And then a second day of that is a section of a test called Work Keys. And it's a, kind of a career...